I don't want to make this more difficult than it needs to be, but did you want to right click on those and rename them so their phone numbers don't show up in the recording?
Good point.
It's me.
Who's gonna call?
Ghostbusters.
Right.
Mr. Cavalo, I appreciate your help here. I'm learning new things here. Thank you. You should um put on a computer class. I gladly pay for your services.
On Tuesday.
You pay me on Tuesday for a burger on Monday or all the way around?
Hey Woody, where's your background?
Right there. I got airborne today. You like that one?
I missed the Trump stuff.
All right, um.
You want to see Trump? I'll give you a little Trump. I like Trump myself. Look at that.
Oh, for heaven's sake.
All right, that's our fun for the day. We're back to business here.
With that being said, I'm going to uh.
Hey Dave, go fly a kite, will ya?
Oh, there you go.
I like that. Okay.
I'll keep that one.
There you go.
Anybody miss Mallory?
We are recording, ladies and gentlemen. I just want everybody to know that. So we are recording. It'll be shown live with a later time on YouTube. Good evening, Town of Dayton. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of the Community Preservation Committee meeting for Thursday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty. And um due to the increasing concerns surrounding the COVID nineteen pandemic, this public this meeting will be held remotely with no physical meeting location. Those seeking to provide public input should do so using the methods listed below. Video and audio of the meeting will be aired on Comcast Local TV nine on a later date. And um there will be, I believe this is going out live on YouTube. It'll be available on the Town of Dayton YouTube channel, which can be accessed using this link, which is www.youtube.com/townofdayton. With that being said, I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. And when everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. With liberty. Thank you. We're gonna go with the roll call of offices present this evening. We have Mr. Marvel.
Here.
Regional Lodge member. Mr. Woods represents the planning board. Mr. Eckerson's an At-Lodge member. Mrs. Adella Callard represents the affordable housing. And myself, Timothy Ryan, I represent the Cox and Recreation Commission. Mr. Baldwin is excused. We have uh one member who we need to fill is another At-Lodge position is open. That was my brother's position. And Mr. Dittit's is excused. He's at a meeting this evening. And I believe that covers everyone. Mr. Eckerson has essay as the one of the At-Lodge members. So I want to go to uh old business. There is no old business at this time. So under the new business, we'd like to review, discuss, and act on the application for eligibility from the Dayton Trails Committee. The twenty twenty-one zero one is the project number. Mr. Cavalo, sir, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Um hi, everybody. Uh for those who don't know me, I'm I'm Jeff Cavalo. I'm the chair of the uh Dayton Trails Committee. And what I've submitted tonight uh for your consideration is a request for uh the amount of thirty thousand dollars for a feasibility study. And um I don't know how much of this you've had a chance to look at, uh but just to give you the overview. And I believe you also have a copy of the map. Uh so what we're trying to do is we want to put in a grant to do on-road improvements for uh the continuation of the uh the division of Conservation and Recreation and DCR Sweet Snoll Trail. Uh you're familiar with the Sweet Snoll uh State Park? And uh what's what's happening at the state level is the DCR was awarded uh the design engineering funding to put a two-mile rail trail in the town of Dayton adjacent to the Sweet Snoll State Park. The south end of that trail terminates behind Alice's last stop on on Somerset Avenue. And at that point, it's an on-road section uh that is really up to uh us as as a town to do something with to continue it further south. The Taunton Taunton River Rail Taunton uh River um I can see the overall would be the uh part of the part of Serphead and the SCBA are existing uh SCBA is an existing uh bikeway uh that runs east and west, south of Dayton through Somerset. Uh and what we'd like to do is uh get a a method to connect what the DCR is putting in State Park and uh connecting that uh to the SCBA eventually in the Somerset. So what this is, what this is, what this is encompassing is uh to have uh the the initial step and getting those grants. And in order to get the grants, we've got to have a um a feasibility study initially. We can go ahead and uh and put in those grants. So what this will allow us to do is uh get the funding in place to have an engineering firm uh look at different options to connect uh the starting point, which is up on Zero Somerset Ave behind Alice's and then the terminating point is uh on Zero Hart Street uh which is the existing entrance of the Broad Cove Nature Trail. And that's map twenty-four, lot twenty-three at Hart Street. Alice's is map seventeen. Lot twenty-three also. It's a coincidence. There's a lot more coverage there that if you can get the opportunity, please read through that, but that is the uh general theme of what we're trying to do here. Thank you.
What's all this background noise?
I think someone's on the phone.
Gentlemen, um yeah, thank you very much for um the presentation, Mr. Cavalo. Um I understand exactly what the needs are with the Dayton Trails Committee and myself personally, I'd like to see um something be done. But um be done in um a safe manner of course for the safety of our residents. And I'm sure some of the other members um most likely feel the same way as I do, and I'm sure you you as well. And um and so what our process usually is, is that we receive an application for eligibility. Um the members, um I'm sure members, um I'm going to ask everyone um individually if you received the information I sent via email in regards to what Mr. Cavalo discussed earlier. Uh Mr. Marvel, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Exson?
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Yep.
Mrs. Callard?
Yes.
I'm a parent. Have uh Miss Robitaille?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, so um with that being said, uh Mr. Cavalo, what our usual policy is in procedure is that we'll accept an application and we'll do what they call take it under advisement and we give the opportunity for the members to bruise over it. We have time between now and town meeting before we have to write a warrant article if the committee decides to vote in favor of it move forward. So um members, I'm going to entertain a motion to take this application under advisement until our next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to know who else is on the um Trails Committee.
Sure.
Are you a committee of one?
No, we're a committee of five. Uh so I'm the I'm the chair. Mike Bagley is a member. Rachel County. Rachel Biggins. And Karen Els. Just five of us. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, bye-bye.
I'll make a motion to take this under advisement.
Seconded by Mrs. Callard. Any further discussion on the application for the Dayton Trails Committee?
Yeah, we we would have uh Jeff come back at the later meeting, right, so we can um ask further questions?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. We will absolutely reach out to you, Jeff. Um when we um probably at that next meeting, we'll have you come back and we'll send you out all the Zoom information and hopefully I won't be hosting next time and somebody else will be doing that, so.
When is your when is your next meeting, just so I can put it on my calendar? That's it?
We meet on the you know, the third Thursday of the month.
Okay.
At at seven PM.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a great evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good night. See you guys. See you later.
Good night, now.
Bye.
So um let's see, is let's see, I'm gonna admit, Mr. Pruitt, Mr. Pruitt, you should be into our meeting. Can you hear me, sir?
I need a roll call vote.
So um he's connecting to audio. Mrs. Gales, hold on for a second. Let me just on YouTube. Yes, um you should be able to unmute yourself, Patty, I believe, from your own computer. Can you hear me? Yes, you should be okay. Are you in now? Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you?
Hear you.
All right, great, Mrs. Gales. I can hear you. Uh Mr. Pruitt, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, I can.
Outstanding. Um Mrs. Gales is in, Mr. Pruitt is in, has.
I gave Rafa the um the numbers he was trying to join.
Okay, I'll just wait a few seconds and um let him in. So in the meantime, members, I'm going to ask that we take um this application for eligibility um and put on standby and go to the report of the chairman or the vice chairman's report. So I'll be real brief. Um Fox and Rec, I believe, was. Hello, yes.
Tim, can I ask a question? Uh on that, I got a second on that last motion. I didn't um have a roll call vote.
I'm sorry, you're absolutely correct. So um I'd like to go to the members. We're gonna go to a roll call vote. Uh Mr. Marvel?
Aye.
This is the the application for eligibility for the Dayton Trails Committee. Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mrs. Callard?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you, Ms. Robitaille.
You're welcome.
So um again, I'd like to just um go over to the chairman's report. I'm gonna skip the financial report for now. And go to the uh chairman's and vice chairman's report. So briefly, um I'm just gonna say that um you can see now that um we've had a few applications come in this year, which is outstanding. And uh we're gonna probably uh get a good look at those and have that opportunity to go through those. Um I want to just talk about briefly the uh Fox and Rec situation. We went to town meeting um asking for monies for the playground and of course, you know, the um finance committee and the Board of Selectmen didn't recommend. So what it did come to a discussion on the floor and it was done purposely to let the, you know, the the residents know that um you know, we're still gonna keep this in the forefront of everyone's minds and that we're gonna go back to, you know, basically to the drawing board and work with our ADA committee in order to, you know, make things happen. So that's basically it for that. I see Mr. Delphin, and I'm gonna go let him in right now. Excuse me. As I helped to bear with me, it's the first time doing this. Mr. Delphin, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, I can hear you. Good evening.
Outstanding. Good evening. So with that being said, I'm going to go back to right now, and we're going to review, discuss, and act on the application of for eligibility from the Dayton Historical Committee. Application number two zero two one dash zero two. Mrs. Gales, you have the floor, ma'am.
Um, thank you. Um, we are applying uh for a survey and planning grant through the Massachusetts Historical Commission for um a preservation consultant for a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars. This um grant would allow us to hire a preservation consultant to help us update our inventory of historical resources um that are listed on the website for the Massachusetts Historical Commission. This is a fifty-fifty matching grant. If we get the grant, um we're asking for twenty-five thousand, we would be reimbursed twelve thousand five hundred back to the town upon completion of the project. And this project is a paper product in that we would have inventory forms completed on our um older homes and our historic resources. Presently, the commission is working on trying to identify our older homes. Much work has been done by previous commissions and um town historians uh in filling out these forms, but if you look at them and see them, they're called Form Bs. Um they need some updating and they need some documentation. So we want to build on what's been done in the past. What this allows us to do is once we've identified these um our historic resources and documented them, then we can begin to evaluate them as far as what goes for the state register, the national historic register, if we wanted to do any kind of local historic districts. It's the first step in having a preservation plan for all of our significant history and our buildings, cemeteries, landmarks in town. Um so that's basically the intent. The commission would work closely with the um consultant in getting this project done. The timeline is such that once our letter of intent is accepted, we and we will know that by December. We would be invited to a meeting to talk about the full grant process. The full grant is due in February. Uh the full grant application is due in February. Awards are made in March and if everything goes smoothly and we get the money from the CPC and from the Mass Historical Commission, we would begin um procurement of the consultant in July of twenty twenty-one. The project would begin by September of twenty twenty-one and end by June of twenty twenty-two. So that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, great. Um Mr. Delphin, do you have anything you'd like to add, sir?
Uh no, I I totally agree with uh with Pat Gales. I'm I'm all set. I'm just I'm just observing, actually. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pruitt, would you like to add anything, sir?
No, I think uh I think Pat's covered it.
Thank you. So I'd just like to let the um members of the Historic Commission know that uh what we do at the CPC is we set the applications and what we do is we take them under advisement, which gives the members the opportunity to look at these. And uh what we do is, of course, we'll have the petitioners back uh come back into us at a later date. So um with that being said, I'm going to entertain a motion to take the application from the Dayton Communitywide Survey Plan Updates from the Dayton Historical Commission, application for eligibility two zero two one dash zero two under advisement.
So moved.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Motion made a second by Mrs. Callard. Any further discussion?
First of all, I.
There are none.
We'll invite uh members back for the uh next meeting.
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Eckerson. Yes, absolutely. They'll be notified of that. So with that being said, um we're gonna vote by roll. Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Marvel?
Aye.
Mrs. Callard?
Aye.
Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan's? Aye. So Mrs. Gales, um what when the committee meets is we always meet on the third Thursday.
Okay.
Yeah, of the third Thursday of every month at seven PM. And I'm sorry about the mix-up with the the Zoom numbers this evening, but we got it all straightened out. So everybody's here and we've published that that's. I'm uh I'm I'm doing this as the host for the first time. I've never done this, so I'm learning. It's at my age, of course, so I'll leave it at that. So again, we meet on the third Thursday of the month at seven PM and we will send out all the information to you in regards to um our agenda and the Zoom information also, the password and the ID.
And also, by that point in time, we will know if our letter of intent has been accepted for the survey and planning grant through the Massachusetts Historical Commission too. So.
Okay, great. So I think uh Mrs. Gales, that's what happens is that we do our actions at annual town meetings. So we would not be passed until then, and I saw that was included and of course in the back of your application. So.
Right.
Correct. All right. Thank you, everyone, for uh coming on from the Historical Commission. And we will be in touch with you.
Okay, thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you. And I know, may everyone, may you all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yep, you too. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Delphin.
Thank you, everybody.
Delphin, happy Thanksgiving to you and your family.
Likewise.
Mr. Pruitt, as you as well, sir. You have your Thanksgiving to you and your family.
Yeah, be safe.
Thank you. Good night now.
Night.
Members, um this evening, I want to go back to the agenda and that would be the financial report. Uh this evening, we do not have a report. The our town accountant has been working diligently to get the book squared away for our just recent um special town meeting. He had to get this book certified and he's been behind on a few things. So I'll make sure that we do have an up-to-date financial report and it will be emailed to the members before our next meeting.
Excuse me, Tim?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Eckerson.
I'm, this is Bill Pruitt.
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh I believe I'm a member of this commit- committee, am I not?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you are. I you I just I forgot that the the BOS has told me that you're the new historical representative. I'm sorry. Thank you for the correction, sir.
Okay.
So Mr. Pruitt, um I'm gonna go around before we move our agenda. I'll do that at the end. Let me just go through the agenda and I'll make the proper deductions, sir. I apologize for that, sir.
No problem.
So the financial report, again, um there'll be no financial report. I've already done the chairman's report, so I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the October fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting.
I'll move.
I second.
I don't know why you're muted, Mr. Eckerson. I can't hear you, sir.
All right, I'm sorry. Go go ahead and approve a minutes and I have uh just something about the financial report.
Okay, sure. So by roll, Mr. Do I hear a second on approval of the meeting minutes?
Dave seconded it.
Okay, Dave seconded. Uh any further discussion? Harry Nunn's vote by roll. Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Marvel?
Aye.
Mrs. Callard?
Aye.
Mr. Reins?
Aye.
We have no public input this evening. So before we leave this evening, Mr. William Pruitt is the historical representative, and he's a new member of our commission. And I'm gonna go around, he can see everyone, I believe, on his computer. And Mr. Robert, Mr. Woods is the representative from the planning board. Mr. Marvel is the at-large member. Mrs. Collard represents the affordable housing section. I myself represent Park and Recreation. Our conservation member is Mr. James Digit. He's excused this evening. And we are down in at-large member, and our chairman is excused for this evening. His name is Mr. Thomas Brooklyn. So that is the composition of the committee. Mr. Pruitt, I'm sorry we had to meet each other under these circumstances, not face to face.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm also a not at-large member. So, welcome.
Yes, and Mr. Eckerson is an at-large member. We have five standard positions by law and the four at-large positions.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome, sir. So, Mr. Eckerson, would you like to say something about the financial report?
Sure, yeah. I had also reached out to Chris LaViolet, and he did send me the expense report through September 30. It's not especially interesting. There really wasn't anything substantial on there yet. But I cannot take on the job of getting the rest of the reports from him, if you'd like to.
Sure, that'd be fantastic. You could forward them to the members. That'd be great.
Yeah, yeah. I think I am the financial officer, so I'm trying to make myself useful here.
I'm sorry. I'm so used to doing all these tasks for all these years, Dave. I do apologize.
It's okay. We're trying to give you a little relief.
We're trying to, yeah, trying to streamline things a little bit. I understand. That's fantastic. Thank you. So does anyone have anything they'd like to say before we adjourn for the evening?
Yeah, I do, Tim, if I may. This is Dave Marvel.
Absolutely, Dave. Go ahead.
Okay, so so I know the playground, we're gonna pull back everything. So where are we, you know, without going too long, do we have to regroup with the equipment again to comply with ADA? Or, you know, where do we stand? I know we've been working on this so long, and now it seems like we're gonna, we're gonna pull back again.
Yeah, we're gonna pull back again. And what's gonna happen is I think this time is we're probably gonna reach out to three or four or five vendors and see what they offer and go from there. You know, I did everything that was required under the law. There was nothing, there was none above board. And it's just a caveat now that we've had a new ADA compliant officer come into the situation. We never had one. And now they've gone and they have a commission that's set up. So they're just an advisory board. We are gonna reach out to them, of course. You know, our building commissioner will reach out to Jim, you know, I did in the past, and we're just gonna have to go back from square zero. I just.
Well, we appreciate the work you did with this, Tim, you know, and I was, I was on board along with everybody else with, you know, Mr. Woods and everyone trying to get this going, you know, and my wife made a joke, said, "What do you think the kids are gonna be on the playground?" I said, "Maybe when they start college." I don't know. He goes, "You know, we try to move ahead." What's that? I thought I heard somebody. I know it takes a while to get things moving. So, you know, but I thank you for your hard work. We'll just have to, you know, start over again.
Yeah, I'll just see what I can do and just go from there. That's, you know, I'm gonna work with these people and see what I can get put together and maybe get an application set up so we can improve money, say, next year at that time meeting. Not this year coming, the 2021, but 2022. So we'll see, you know, I'm, I'm not running for reelection in April. So we'll see what I can do if somebody wants to, you know, ask me if I want to, you know, hang around and help them out a little bit, you know. I probably will. That's just who I am, you know. So I don't know. Anybody like to say anything before we wrap things up for this evening?
Well, I'd like to touch on the playground a little myself. Been going on forever and a day. The longer it takes, the more it costs. The Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee want to see this entire playground paid for by the CPC. They don't want to shell out any of the town's money. For whatever reason, Park and Rec has been basically shit on since the beginning of time.
Yeah, we're still recording, so.
Okay, well, I'm glad. Maybe people will listen to this. Park and Rec is still operating on the same budget they had in 1988. Every other budget in the town has gone up and up and up. And every year, the Finance Committee picks apart the smallest budgets in the town. And I don't think the CPC has enough money to put out $250,000 for a playground. So the town is gonna have to chip in a little money also. We don't have that kind of money.
I agree, Woody. I agree. You know, it's just, we're gonna have to see what we can do. Like the company I dealt with, MRC, they have grants and their grants run like a weird time, like after after the summer season and run until like November. It's kind of bizarre. It's not, there's not a lot of timeframe that they work with, you know.
Well, I happened to sit in on the last ADA Commission's meeting, and they literally picked apart the entire playground that you had prepared. I don't know what it is they're looking for, and I don't think they know what they're looking for, but they want to have a lot of input. And like you said, they're just an advisory board.
I believe it was compliant, right, Tim? That what, that their design was compliant, right?
Oh, absolutely, it was. It was designed and compliant by law. So it's just, you know, hey, I don't know. Some claim to be experts and others don't. I don't know. I but anybody else have anything they'd like to add before we adjourn for the evening?
Jonathan Gales contact you, Tim, at all? Because he said he was gonna talk to you about this, too.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get together. I gotta talk to, you know, Mr. Roser and see, you know, what the course of action is gonna be going forward and go from there, you know. I'm at the, right now, I'm at the call of the chair of Park and Rec because he's the one that calls the meetings. I don't call the meetings anymore.
Right, I understand.
Okay, Tim?
Yes.
This is Bill Pruitt. The only
Yes, sir.
The only question I have is I would like to know where to find information about the committee as far as, you know, community preservation committee. In terms of does the money come into like a fund every time there's every time there's a tax collection? Or how does that work?
All right, so, Mr. Pruitt, you can go to the Massachusetts General Law. It's 44B, and that explains basically what each department within the law itself does, like what Park and Rec, what we represent, and what, you know, the planning board represents, the Historical Commission, and so on. Now, in regards to monies, yes, it's 1% of the your first $100,000 of your real estate evaluation is exempt. It's taxed on 1% after that. So 1% goes into a fund. The state of Massachusetts has monies that come in from the Registry of Deeds and other sources that they put together a formula and they send X amount of monies back to cities and towns. Now, cities and towns, when they passed the act, had the opportunity to do either 1%, 2%, or 3%. And if you did 2% or 3%, you got a second round of monies, and 3% may get a third round of monies. Town of Dyson only wanted 1% because we're a low-income community at the time, but we thought it was a great thing to preserve some, you know, historical, you know, needs in town or build playgrounds, do open space, you know, do things like a project we're doing in conjunction with the state at the Lincoln Village, and that's your electrical panels. So back to first $100,000 of real estate taxes exempt. You tax 1% after that. The state comes in, kicks in a certain amount of monies. So this year, let me get out of the agenda as I speak with you briefly here, sir. And I believe the members should be on the list from the Community Preservation Coalition themselves. So, Mr. Pruitt, I have your email address. We'll get you on their list for information. They sent down, and the Community Preservation Coalition is a think tank we pay dues to, who works for us and gives us not legal decisions, but that type of guidance. So let me just go in. So this year, the trust fund, we had some really good news this year. The trust funds, the Massachusetts Department of Revenue released the Community Preservation Trust Fund distribution for each CPA municipality today. And that was back on November 12. And that's all CPA communities received a 28.6% match on round one of the trust fund distribution. So if the Town of Dyson says puts in a close $100,000, we receive $28,600 back. And that's, that was a pretty good chunk of monies that was sent through this year. Now, they did send out a spreadsheet that I could jump onto. And as I say, I believe the members have already received this information, and it's out there. They could take a look at it. And I'll just go to the spreadsheet real quick. And it gives a breakdown for every town. And let's see. Town of Dyson, this year, we took in $114,817 in the search ad, which is what the taxes we received, round one, we received from the state $32,868 on those monies. And that was our final total distribution for 2020. And that was in November when that came out. So I hope that helps to answer a little bit of your question, Mr.
You're saying there's a, this is all regulated by the state?
Correct.
Okay, so is this a state website where I can go find all the rules for this, or is it on the Dyson website?
Well, no, what you need to do is you, what you need to do is you can go to chapter, Massachusetts General Law, chapter 44B. And that explains what the community preservation law is all about. And in regards to the thing that I just read, that was from the Community Preservation Coalition, who was our think tank we paid dues to, and yes, it's available only if you're a member from the coalition. So what I need to do is get your email address into the coalition, and then you receive all their emails with all the newsletters and everything else that goes down with it.
So, so just one last question. This money, is this a rolling fund, or does it have to be paid out at the end of the fiscal year? Or how does that work, you know?
Usually, as like anything else, it's, the receipts are certified usually September, October. That's why the award comes out in November. So the awards are usually given out every year in November.
But is this a cumulative thing? In other words, if you don't, if the money doesn't get granted, all the money that you deserve, does that money?
Okay, sorry. I understand. Let me explain. So what happens is that we go to town meeting every year. You probably heard me on the floor. We set aside three categories. Those are called the 10, 10, and 10 categories. So 10% goes into the affordable housing. 10%, I believe, goes into the historical, and 10% goes into conservation. And then after that, you have a 5% administrative budget. And then you base that on the usual average of $100,000 taken in. So what happens is that $10,000 each year goes into those categories, $5,000 is what budget we work with. That's just, that changes every year. That's still five grand. It never accumulates. And then the $65,000 is left over goes into what they call the undesignedated reserve. So those monies accumulate every year also if you do not have any projects.
So there's no penalty for not spending?
Oh, no, absolutely not. No, 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 absolutely not. And the thing is that we are such an independent advisory board that the Board of Selectmen has no jurisdiction over how we spend the money. All we do is, we are just a board, a body who makes recommendations to the people of town. That's all we do.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you're very welcome, sir. I hope I answered some of your questions.
Yeah, I said something, Tim, there. Yeah, Mr. Pruitt, so there is a, there is a report that shows the running balances, and we just didn't have it. As Tim said earlier, the town accountant's been pretty tied up. But he's gonna, I'll try to get that for the next meeting. And you'll see the, the running totals are pretty substantial.
So basically, if you don't spend, you can actually run up an unlimited total, I guess, huh, balance?
Yeah, exactly. Because what happens, what happens in the past was to prove, we haven't spent any money, say, on his, on any other historical projects in the last few years. So right now, there's around $75,000 in that kitty. So this year at town meeting, since we put the $10,000 in those categories, there's gonna be an automatic bump of another $10,000 into the historical category as well as conservation. Excuse me, in the affordable housing section. So those will automatically bump up. And then the extra monies that we receive will, $65,000 will be based to go into the undesignedated reserve. But I understand what you're saying is that you have extra monies that are left over from what was given this year. So what we need to do is that we'll go back to town meeting and make those adjustments to those proper categories is what we need, what usually happens.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, you're very welcome, sir. And welcome to, welcome to the committee.
Oh, thanks.
So Karen, are you pretty much squared away on your end?
Yeah, but I just would like to get Mr. Pruitt's email address.
Mr. Pruitt, it's up to you. This meeting is recorded, so it's out there for the general public. So why don't you? My phone number's out there anyway. So, Mr. Pruitt, if you have a pen and a piece of paper?
Believe it or not, I don't have a pen. But what do you need? What are you gonna try to tell me?
I was gonna give you my phone number so you could call me, and then I could forward your email address to our administrative assistant.
Don't you have my email address?
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me check. I think I should, yeah.
You know what, guys? I'm sorry. Karen, you know what you could do? Put it in the chat. No, we can't. That's right. That gets recorded. Sorry.
Yeah, so, no, no, I believe I do have it, Mr. Pruitt. I believe you're right.
Well, you can forward.
Yeah, I'll forward it to her.
Okay.
I'll forward it to Mrs. Robata. All right, so welcome to the committee, Mr. Pruitt. And before we do adjourn this evening, I would just like to wish the members a happy Thanksgiving and try to celebrate as best you can. And may your families be healthy throughout Thanksgiving holidays.
Thank you. Same with you, Tim.
Same to you.
Likewise, you too, Tim. Yeah, thanks, Tim. Same to you.
Thanks, guys. At this point, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. I'd like to thank everyone for, before I do that, to thank everyone for being here this evening and being you know, so helpful with what I was trying to do here. It's my first time doing a Zoom meeting, and I'm learning this, and it's I appreciate the help. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
My motion.
Same here.
Was we made in second. Any further discussion on adjournments? Let's vote by roll. Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Marvel?
Aye.
Mrs. Collard?
Aye.
Mr. Eckerson?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt, before we do adjourn, we always meet on the third Thursday of the month. Mr. Pruitt, before we do adjourn, we always meet on the third Thursday of the month at seven P M. And I have your email address, and we'll forward all the Zoom information for the login, so you'll have it next month. It'll be correct.
Okay, great.
And, Mr. Pruitt, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan's, I vote aye. So, members, again, third Thursday of the month, but I don't have my calendar in front of me. Let me just pull it up very quickly here. We are on for the seventeenth of December, one seventh December.
Yep.
And then. Because we do have some business that we have to attend to. I know the holidays are the following week, but they're not until. That Friday after, so at this point in time. So again, seventeen December, and the motion has been made in the second to adjourn. Everyone's voted aye. So I'd like to, again, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and good night, Dyson. Thank you.
Good night, guys. Welcome aboard, boy. Take care.